I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting, also to include a meeting of the City Council acting as the housing authority for December 19. If we may please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
And we won't be having an invocation, but on behalf of the entire City Council and all the City employees of the City of Avalon, we would like to welcome and wish everyone out there in television land and who are here today, a very safe and happy Christmas and a wonderful new year. Okay, and may we please have the roll call. Councilmember Cassidy.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Sampson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Olson.
Here.
And Mayor Marshall.
Here. And Denise, it's nice to have you sitting here, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know why you didn't go sit by Scott, but...
I don't like to sit by Scott. I want to sit by Scott.
Anyway, we have presentations this evening. Denise, would you like to introduce?
I'd like to introduce Diane Gladwell, she's from Gladwell Governmental Services Incorporated. She first came to Catalina to visit our staff and make her preliminary judgments of our terrible record-keeping system and destruction policy back in 2015, and we're very glad that we have started up again, and she's been meeting regularly with us, a few of the staff members, as well as each department head, and I'm going to let her give a little summary of it.
Thank you, Diane.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here to help present the records retention policy for the city, which goes over how long different records are kept by different departments and who's going to keep the original. This avoids duplication of effort and improves efficiency and lowers the cost for the city operations. I have helped over 200 cities in California do this. I'm a former city clerk of both Glendale and San Luis Obispo, and about 24 years ago, I stopped being a city clerk and started this business so I could be home whenever I needed to for my son, who's in Rotary, along with Ron and Barbara Douth, who you may remember from Avalon, they lived down the street from us in Lake Arrowhead. It's a small world after all. And so, as Denise mentioned, I came a couple of years ago and we did an assessment of where you were with the records retention program, because we didn't want to spend any money where you didn't need to have money spent, so we were assessing where you were. What we're presenting to you tonight, we've met with all the employees, the City attorneys reviewed it, there's one late item that came in, it's just an addition of a CCTV video. Other than that, everything's presented in your agenda packet, along with a resolution of adoption, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have, and I have my red pen in case you want to make any changes.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
I have a question. How far back do the records go? Do they go back as far as the city has been incorporated city?
They do, and actually, they go beyond. So, I will tell you...
Do they have records back to 1913?
Yes, yes. You have a warehouse, and actually, the warehouse is the only one that I found a suit of armor in, in the entire state of California, I'll have you know. But you do have very old records stored in a variety of different places. Our role is to get rid of the junk so that the old records can be properly preserved, and we have a project under the direction of the CAO to scan important records in so they can be accessible and searched by the public also. So, part of this is identifying the important records and getting them preserved, but you have very old records.
And mainly, those are our city ordinances when we first became incorporated.
Mainly ordinances.
Yeah, mainly ordinances, or you're required to keep the ordinances or the agendas, but everything else...
So, we have agendas on a regular basis from 1913?
No. We do not, Joe.
No, okay.
You have minutes and ordinances from 1913, but probably not the agenda packets.
Yeah.
Prior to computers, and I was trained prior to computers, I hate to admit that, but the practice was to keep the minutes and destroy the agenda packets in a regular course of business, and they just didn't have a way to keep them and search them in a manner. But now, we have deemed to be the council agenda packets are permanent now, so any that we find, and we've got them on the website going back to 2015, so that's awesome, or later than that, actually. So, you've got many on the website that are accessible to the public, but any agenda packet that we find now, we are keeping permanently.
1915?
What?
1915?
2015. I think, I looked today, and I think it went back to 2002, but I'm not, I'm not, I know it went back several years for the agenda packets that are accessible to the public on the city's website.
The agenda itself, but not the entire packet, but close.
Okay.
I wish we had everything if we did.
Me too.
We need a bigger warehouse.
Yeah.
If we find them, we'll preserve them.
Yes, please do. Because we've been missing some records from the 20s and 30s, which we would, it would really be helpful if we had those records.
Well, part of the process of implementation will be finding those records, destroying the unnecessary ones, but identifying them and making sure that we know where all your records are.
Okay, great.
Who makes that decision, what records get taken off or what records we keep?
The employees. Well, this will provide the basic guideline, like we said, the agenda packets are kept permanently, but the employees will be trained, they'll have forms, everything will be done in an authorized manner, so there's a process that they go through before any records destroyed that it's authorized first by three different people, and then they'll go through. But the employees typically do the assessment. We may hire additional staff, and I have been hired by different cities to help, come help them do the hard stuff.
So, what the schedule does is the council sets the policy for records that you're going to keep forever, records that you're going to keep for three years, five years, seven years after various transactions, and after that, then the records can be destroyed. They don't have to be destroyed, but they can be destroyed. So, after the council says, "Here are the records that you can basically discard," then city staff will go through those records, and then if they decide that we don't need these records anymore, then the City Attorney's Office has to personally sign off on all the records that are being destroyed, because sometimes employees may say, "We don't need these anymore," but we may know of some lawsuit or some matter that is pending, for instance, your insurance records that you kept from the 1960s and 50s that proved very beneficial to have.
Which are permanent.
You could destroy those, but those were kept, and we all know what happened, the good things happened with those.
There's actually three signatures before a record's destroyed.
And most of, and there was quite a few that, when Diane was following the regular guidelines for weed go, "No, we have to hang on to that a little bit longer," so...
Yes, your employees were very conservative.
Okay, is there any questions? And the audience have any questions? Okay.
Well, thank you very much, happy holidays, everybody.
You're welcome, thank you. Is there?
Moved to adopt the resolution authorizing records, retention schedules, and destruction of certain city records.
I'll second.
That would be Agenda Item Number...
Six.
On consent calendar.
I'll second.
Moved in second, no further comment? Call for the vote. Five, all ayes.
I hope the community doesn't mind, but we're going to take a few things out of order. We're going to go to Item Number 13 first, which is the cannabis delivery service application.
Yeah, so Item Number 13 is a preliminary draft of the type of application that we'd be asking people to review, fill out. There's actually two parts of this, there's first, there's the actual application, which is in draft form, and then there's also, in addition to the application, anyone would have to submit a medical cannabis delivery operating plan, so that they would describe... The application goes to the type of business that they are, their experience, basic biographical information, and then the cannabis delivery operating plan would be how they're actually going to operate, what protocols they are going to put in. So, the purpose of this tonight is just to tell you that this is where we are right now. The state of California is still in the process of adopting its own rules and for licensing providers of marijuana, has not completed that, and what is required under state law is before you do delivery service or recreational service, you have to actually have that state license, and they're still working through that, they're not done yet, so this can be further studied, maybe we want to announce it, you know, maybe notice it more to some of the people that we know are interested in this, because it is quite a telephone book full of material.
Putting that lightly.
But we anticipate that the state would be done sometime early spring, hopefully. So, until then, you know, we can have the application ready to go, and we can have some more study sessions on it, but until the state approves its own program, we can't issue any licenses.
Okay. And I know that Councilwoman Cassidy had made comments, and I had to, some of the ones before, and I don't know in reviewing it now if you saw, a lot of that was included or...
Mayor, I'd like to say one thing is that we have Devin Thompson in the audience, she is the one that actually produced this document for us, and she's worked very closely with Best, Best, and Krieger, Victor Pronto, and Scott on it, so any comments and recommendations you might have made that you don't see in there, there's very good reasons of why not, and she's here this evening so she could answer anything that, any details...
Why don't you just step up, just for, just because?
Hi, everyone, good evening.
Good evening.
I did go through from the original draft, version one, and redlined and made a bunch of questions, and then I went back through and compared version one with my notes with version two, and I still have a significant number of questions unanswered for me, so whether, however you want to do that, if you want me to work with them offline, I can, but some of, I at least would like the general public to know what my questions are, and then we can, if they're a longer conversation, I'm happy to take that offline after this evening as well.
If you want to, and I think maybe it is just note-taking time, because we're not in a hurry to get this done, so if you wanted to just kind of highlight some of those slots, would be good.
Sure. One of the questions was about the neighbors, what rights do the neighbors have if they would, if they do not want to have a delivery service next door to them?
Well, the, per the municipal code, it would have to be in a commercial zone, so the impact on a neighborhood or residence should be minimal, and I know that there are areas in Avalon that there are residences in commercial zones, so maybe that's actually more of a planning question, if they have any recourse on that.
So, secondarily to that then, though, you have a lot of businesses, perhaps business owners that own the land next to another property, so I guess, is there a provision that they could write letters, like if you, if you had a dot of a residence, similar to what we do at planning commission level, if you have a residence and every single facility around that residence says, or around that, that commercial location says, "We don't want to have this delivery service here," does that hold any weight?
Well, there is a plan check process, so I'm assuming that would go before the planning commission for their review and approval. By far, the biggest limiting factor for any potential business owner will be finding a brick and mortar establishment in the commercial zone to establish their business. So, I'm not sure how many restrictions you could put on that one item. One of the ideas I had with the application is to establish a rubric where you can weigh all of those factors, the impact on the community, the sentiment of the neighborhood, and then when you all have all of the completed applications before you, you'll be able to see how each applicant ranks in terms of their operational plan, their security offerings, their business structure, and then impact on the neighborhood could be included in that rubric.
And I think it's, it's my recollection that you're only issuing one license, and I believe that the City Council will make that determination, so what will happen is you'll have a hearing where you're going to decide who gets the franchise, and those factors will be considered.
Right, and I thought, I can, I understand your questions, however, I thought the way the ordinance was written sends, nobody should be going into that place other than the employee or the owner or whatever, that, and with all the security and all of the, everything that's going on, it's more than we've asked for any other kind of business, so I thought we kind of covered that in the ordinance so that there shouldn't be that concern, but I mean, I'm sure people will still have a concern.
So, with that, with that comment of the security, the question is asked, will security guards be on site, instead of what we said in the ordinance that there will be, not will there be, but there will be?
So, that reasoning goes back to my rubric idea, rather than just writing someplace in the, in the application, "Security guards are required," we're asking the applicant to actually state yes or no, and kind of acknowledge that, their response to that question, and then in terms of reviewing the application, if someone puts a no, it's a really easy way to throw out the application. So, and that way, if you go to the security, the security page of the application, I want to say it's on 16 off the top of my head, but it's actually on...
Security information, page 12.
Page 12. Page 12 will outline all of the aspects of security, so it even speaks to all the aspects of security that are required by the municipal code, so it speaks to the 24-hour video surveillance, panic buttons, all, all those nuances of our code.
So, then that answers the question about whether or not the City of Avalon should, or my comment was, the City of Avalon should have access to security cameras, or maybe written authorization to Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, but that's actually part of the ordinance.
Yes, ma'am.
So, in all fairness, I did not compare the application to our ordinance, but I see the way that you're...
Yes, so the reasoning, the reasoning was...
And then one of the things is, we're also saying that the ordinance sets forth the minimum security requirements, and so in the security plan, they can go above and beyond that, and then that will be a factor that you will look at in determining who gets the license.
We just said no guns.
Yeah, in terms, in terms of the application, I tried to make it so it would be really user-friendly for all of us to evaluate the applications compared to what's required by the code, so you don't have to seek out that kind of information.
So, then another question was, we had talked at one point in a meeting up here, does the delivery have to occur on private property, and then could it be banned from city property, for example, front street or city hall premises?
I thought they had to go to a residence or a building, they can't be passing stuff on the street. They have to go to, and they'll have to show through their tracking system that they went to 330 Descanso, they didn't go to the front of High Tide Traders.
Okay.
About hotels.
Right, that's part of that, where that comes from.
And so hotels can...
Can.
They can, a hotel can say, "Yes, we're going to allow this," or they can prohibit guests from receiving it, it's up to each individual hotel, or each individual apartment, for instance, an apartment owner could say, "No marijuana here" as part of their lease, that's a private matter between the landlord and tenant, or the hotel and its guests. But we will, we would, we would, our ordinance allows that to happen, but we put it in the hands of the third party as to whether they're going to accept it. We're not going to regulate how hotels or landlords conduct their business, but we will allow services to those areas if it's, if the owner of the property allowed.
Most things would be best being conducted very discreetly, and, you know, basically where it's done and nobody knows it, that's the best way. You know, I've had a question about something that we've already passed, which is like the security. We don't, we don't mandate that any other business in this town have a security officer that I'm aware of, and we've taken the ability for the security officer to provide any protection, that is, if there is some kind of a hostile takeover of the, of the place. I'm wondering why we're making these people have a security guard that's basically unarmed.
I think that's kind of a good question, because now all of a sudden, you've got somebody standing out in front of the building, let's say, I'm at the whatever address, and now you've got the security guy out there, makes, makes it more obvious if they're not even delivering, you know, they're, but...
We have a lot of other cash businesses in this town that have way more cash on hand, this probably, that this place is going to be...
Well, isn't some of this required by the state?
No.
Some, well, some securities required after the 24-hour security, that's, I believe, sending that to the City Council to determine, draft of the ordinance.
Dispensaries, yes.
We did determining that, determined that, but I'm questioning it, because I've had some people question me about it, and it's like, why do we make, because that's a really big expense for the people that are going to be running this, this delivery service, so, anyway, I don't, I don't know how their business model is going to be in the black if they're having to pay probably upwards of a couple hundred thousand dollars a year for a security guard, that's an awful lot of money, just to have someone standing around when you have video cameras, we have the Sheriff's Department close by, and I know, you know, they're probably overtaxed at this point, but, and it's just nice to know that there's what we have and why we have it, and...
At the time, Councilman, there wasn't, when we read that ordinance a couple of times, there was no opposition by anybody about the security issue, and yes, probably people think about things later, I don't know if we should just finish out this application process, and then if that becomes, I don't know, I don't know.
And that's the nice thing about the application, is if you find the most qualified applicant checked the no box on that question, it can be something that council reevaluates and modifies the municipal code in that way.
Right, okay.
But to speak to the security guard, I think that his role, even because he's unarmed and everything, wouldn't be to necessarily engage with an intruder, but to hit a panic button and alert local law enforcement, you know, rather than...
Right.
Okay.
Well, let me ask you, the security guard doesn't have to be standing on the outside of the building, right? The security person could be...
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, the actual, if you look on the security plan, and I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but it says that the security plan should identify a company monitoring the area and provide confirmation that the security company is staffed 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. So, I have to look at the ordinance, but it may be that, you know, during operational hours, you have someone physically there, but in off-hours, you just have someone monitoring it on a camera somewhere. And I don't know.
Okay, there's also a letter that I received, and I have to acknowledge it, and it goes as follows, "I have read Agenda Item Number 13 on tomorrow's schedule. Throughout the document, it refers to medical cannabis. The state of California has legalized recreational marijuana use. This is what is going to be delivered, not medical." Is there any truth to that? I mean, is...
Well, we're, that's where law enforcement will come in, if people are doing that, and they're not doing it with people that have legitimate cards, they're in violation of our city laws.
And their permit's in jeopardy.
Our ordinance only allows the delivery of medical marijuana. If this company is delivering marijuana for recreational use, then they're subject to having their permit pulled.
Does California, make that obvious what's, in the California code, is it obvious what's, that there's actually medical marijuana produced in a facility, and this, and this particular product here is not medical marijuana? I mean, is there really, do they decipher one from the other?
California allows both, and then what the, what the rule that the state legislature passed was, we're going to allow recreational and medical marijuana in the state, but we're going to allow each city to determine whether it's going to have both, or none, or one, and so it leaves it up to the state.
I'm curious, is there a difference between the product?
No.
There's no difference, okay. So, what, the difference is, we just put a name on it?
No, the difference is, you have to have a card to get it.
You have to have a card to get it.
Okay, for medical.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the application fee at some other time, we create that?
We're going to have to establish what that fee is, and part of that is going to be, once you have completed the checklist for what we'd have to look at, then we would determine what the cost to the city is of processing that, and then that fee would be established by the council in a resolution, so that, you know, the city is reimbursed for the cost it takes to do all this analysis of the application.
The analysis and the background checks and the whatever, and, okay, now, then we are also saying with this that there's no other outside costs because of the operation after issuance that we can, can somehow assess to these fees?
Well, you can only assess fees that cover your costs. Any other fees that you put on will be taxes, and the voters could put on a tax, they could put on a marijuana tax.
I understand that, but...
But this does...
But if we're saying going forward with this, we also, okay, so then it's also the cost of the fire department to go check it out, it's the cost of the Sheriff's Department to go check it out, and all of those fees?
What about the programs? Educational programs, safety programs?
So, we can't require them, but part of the application that is in the ordinance, and it's in the conditions, is they've got to provide what they're planned, they've got to show what they're going to do for the community in terms of education, outreach, anti-drug programs, and you and your determinations to who gets this permit can say, "Okay, this program's better, we're going to go with this vendor versus another vendor."
So, that's going to be on the backs of the business that is in the delivery service?
Yes.
That's an awful lot to ask, but...
There is information out there that's free, though, that, or just even the stuff that Rhonda has, I mean, there's a lot of...
Yeah, but she doesn't operate cost-free, they have to pay for that, and the more, the more backing they get financially, the better and more effective their programs, and the more broad spectrum they can reach, and also, the churches need money, because the churches can also help out with this as well, so, you know, even a teen center might be able to help out with, help us out with this in educating the community. Anyway, just a thought.
Okay, good.
So, with the documents and fees, the, it's saying for the application process that the applicant will obtain a City of Avalon business license, and then it talks, and then about insurance, that it says documents may include quotations from an insurance agency, but does this mean that, so say we have 15 participants who want to apply for the franchise, we're only going to choose one of those applicants, so it doesn't make sense for 15 companies to go out and actually process all this document, but prior to actually receiving the authorization to move forward, they will have to show a proof of insurance, proof of workers' comp insurance, and proof of city license, correct?
Yes, it would be conditional, obviously, once we get more towards the development of the actual application, one factor that you could consider is if they've already got their state license, for instance, some businesses already have their, well, some businesses may come to you and be, have locations elsewhere that do delivery services, and they have already got their state license.
Right.
Others may be just, you know, focused on Avalon, and you would condition the granting of this permit on they're getting that, but it's obviously a factor that you can take into consideration when you're awarding this license.
Yeah, so when I put together the application checklist, and that's the, the item number four, where I'm asking for quotations for, proof of insurance, or an insurance agency providing a potential applicant with a letter that says that they will insure them, that was kind of, it's the more stringent, or the, you know, the most, yeah, stringent approach in terms of the application, so you could require that from someone, or you could wait until they get further on up the road in the application process to, to require that.
And then I may have overlooked it, but I didn't readily see that if you're renting a commercial location where you would be required to have a written document from the owner of the property allowing...
Yeah, it's in there.
It is, I, where did I miss that?
Yeah, it is.
Page where?
15, property owner...
And, so we just put together a sample letter that was just kind of fill in the blank, so you would list the property owner's name and give a space for the property owner to sign.
Oh, right, right, right. Okay, I didn't read that the second go.
Okay, I didn't read that the second go, I read it in version one.
Yeah.
All my other list of 20, 22 things was addressed, so thank you for adding those into the application. I appreciated that.
My pleasure.
Okay, so we reviewed, we've discussed, we've provided comments, and do we want to have this back at the next council meeting?
Yeah, what I would suggest is, unless there's someone who wants to talk with about this, is that, because I know that there is substantial interest in this and the community, we do more, perhaps more some outreach and the newspapers say that we're going to be discussing this process at that meeting. And then by then we'll also have a better idea where the state is, because the state is really supposed to have completed their stuff by January 1st. And so hopefully we'll have some better information as to how far along in the process is so that we can realistically say this is going to occur in June, August, or whenever it ever gets there.
Okay. Are there comments from the audience?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Devin, thank you very much for working on that. I know it has, it's been fascinating though as well, huh? Yeah, thank you. Okay, now we're going to go to item number 12. And that's the discussion of moving the time of the city council meetings to five o'clock.
So, okay, this is from the city attorney again. This is pursuant to your request. This is an ordinance that would move the meeting time from six to five. So this would be for the introduction and first greeting. It's all yours to discuss and decide what you want to do.
I know that there's, Councilman Sampson made the comment about, you know, keep it the way it is and all of that. I guess, I mean, I really would like to see it at five. I guess one of the concessions I'd make, if it's not too confusing.
Hi, Devin.
You know me, I like to kind of go, okay. Is just do it during daylight savings time. Change it to five when it gets dark and then when it goes back to daylight, when everybody can still work in, not working in the dark, it changes. That's my only other comment.
I kind of like that a little more because at five o'clock, I'm pretty much closing shop right there. I mean, that's going to put me out of this whole situation. Five o'clock is still four hours of five, six, seven, eight. There's still four hours of daylight, so that's going to kill me. I'll have to, I'll have to do something else. So.
Yeah, because if you can work till six or seven, I mean, I understand. So I don't know if that's, if that's not too confusing, if that's, but that's just my comment, so. The rest of the council? And Denise, you can look, she's got to look at her face and that screen's right in her face, so I can't really see the other.
My only comments to having different times like that, Mayor, is that just us even having election and us having the polls, even though it's advertised all the time, the election polls, you know, we do seven to seven. When the county comes in, it's seven to eight. So then we get residents, why, what do you mean, you close at seven? Or the polling places, those are just examples of when you make the changes. So I think it just needs to be consistent, however, that's my opinion.
I still like the idea of starting at five and doing all of the closed session and items like that first and then starting the regular meeting at six. So if we didn't have closed session items, then we would, had just, the meeting would start at six, but if we had closed session, then we would do those first since the public isn't participative in those.
Scott, how the hell do I write that?
Am I going to regroup?
No, I was thinking how we would write that.
Just like what you said.
You could.
How many, what percentage of the time do we have closed session meetings? 50% of the time?
Fifty?
And what's the problem again?
No, no, that.
No, I mean, what's the problem with, with the way it is? Problem with the council that doesn't want it.
I don't mind the way it is.
Okay, I like it because, again, wintertime, it's cold, it's dark, a lot of people don't like to come out in a dark. Majority of people that are in our audience are people that, that don't work. I know. Or, or that, the people that don't work or people that need to come for business and that's their business. If they need to come to a council meeting, they don't care when it is, they're going to have to be there. That's part of doing their job. And it's easier on staff, I think, if we just go from a day at work till there and get it over with instead of being, and I know we want to talk about, you know, keeping our council meetings down to a manageable number of hours, but when we get out at 10 or 11, I don't know, it just seems like I had some other, oh, and for those people that come to meetings, they can get on a 7:45 boat and go home. It doesn't cost the city as much money or whoever that other person is because they're not getting, having to get a hotel room and.
It's costing the city money, we're losing bed tax.
We're paying for them.
We're paying for it, yeah.
We're paying, see, tonight we could have started at five, he could have gotten on a 7:45 boat. So, I don't know, again, the community.
But I want to have dinner here in Apple.
Sometimes you can't.
I know.
So, anyway.
I'd like to leave it the way it is and revisit it in three or four months.
Yeah.
But I think, I think the agendas are getting a little bit more manageable, hopefully.
We don't know that.
Hopefully.
We don't know that.
I like, I like the five o'clock personally. We've all been there on closed sessions when we're making decisions and we've been here for six, seven hours. And to me, it seems, for me, sometimes your head's not really clear when you have to make decisions like that in a closed session because you've been here for five, six hours. That'd be one of the reasons I'd still like to see it start a little earlier.
Well, if we.
That would be my thing. And we keep the meeting at six, but we schedule it at five and we have closed session items. That doesn't, doesn't change the code.
Doesn't get people on a 7:45 boat.
But again, Denise said, changing it over back and forth is a big thing.
Well, so the meeting, so the meeting would start at, oh, yeah, I see. So then if there's no closed sessions, then, then we all just know to get here at six.
Right.
Has anybody complained about this or is it just us?
No, I get complaints about it all the time. People check out at 8:30 at night, turn off the TV and just say, then I spend the next five or six days talking about what happened after 8:30 at night, so.
So, so are we going to end our meetings at 8:30 now or eight o'clock?
No, Joe, that's not what we're saying. What we're saying is we're trying to make it work for us as those of us here making decisions and we're also looking at what works best for our community. And if we are getting comments on both sides of the spectrum, then we should be taking those into consideration. So, I mean.
We should maybe let the voters decide. Maybe we should put this on the, on agenda on the, as a voting, and let the community decide.
Put it on the ballot?
Yeah, put it on the ballot.
No, I'm not. The other thing is the people that are home, we start the meeting at five and just as you know, how many of our constituents have gotten up in their pajamas and run down here when there's something to talk about? So if they.
Why don't we just have it at eight in the morning then? Or twelve, and even better.
Well, because.
I'm ready.
There's quite a few cities that do.
They're streaming it live or they're not caring and they're watching it the next day or they're asking us what happened. It's, comments from the audience?
Let's get it at 5:30.
Great compromise.
Then you can go home and get something to eat really quick, Ole, right at 5:30.
I, I'd like to try it out, so I'm going to make a motion to move the council meetings from five, from 6:00 PM to 5:00 PM and let's give it 90 days and see how it works. Can we do that? Or does it have to fully change?
No, so what you want to do is you want to give direction to staff, not that you're.
Oh, I want to give direction to.
You're not changing the ordinance. What you'd like to do is for the next three months, that we would pursuant to the municipal code, which allows you to, it's a regular meeting, give it 72 hours notice, to notice it such that the meetings start at five o'clock for the next three months. And then we, to see how that.
See how it goes and take comments from the public from there.
I'll second that.
That's direction for.
That's direction.
What did he say?
Comments from the community? Nothing? Okay, other comments from the council?
Terrible idea. Terrible idea and it's going to kill me and I probably won't run for council because of it next election.
The next three months are winter months.
It doesn't matter. Doesn't matter, that's killing me. So go ahead, you guys, go ahead and have a good time.
Okay, let's call for the vote.
Three ayes, Marshall Cassidy Hernandez, two nos, Sampson and Olson.
What was last night?
Good luck, Ole and Annie. Annie and, Richard.
Okay, so now we are at announcements and written communications. Are there any announcements or written communications?
I have none of either.
I don't either. Department head.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I do have one. You can pull your papers out if you're interested in running for city council. We have the spot of the mayor that is up for a two-year term and we have two city council member seats that are up for a four-year term. You could start pulling them as of Monday and you have until January 12th at 5:00 PM. And you come to the city clerk's office and I'll give you a packet.
Great, thank you. Okay, department head reports, this is something new that the city manager has wanted to implement and so that you don't feel like you have to come up and run in with the rest of the audience, you can, you'll have your time, so.
We're still going to limit you to three minutes.
Okay, I think I accomplished that.
With Bob Greenlaw, we can, he needs three minutes per topic. He's got a lot going on.
I'm trying to keep it to three minutes, so a lot of this, I'm just trying to go over briefly over some things that are happening, so. Project update, the 2016 CIP project, the contract work is now completed. We're at punch list mode with a contractor. So that was the sewer manholes, the saltwater valves and the paving that we saw around the community. We're working on the cemetery road paving. We did that paving on Thursday, came out great. That, let's say, five-fold is going to provide value to the city just in keeping our equipment in good shape comparably to what that road was. Okay, and we're also working, and that'll continue on, we're doing some concrete work around the edges and then some of the concrete work down into the yards. That'll continue on for about another month with our own crews and that's not the contractor's crews. The Five Corners project, that's that grant-funded project, the scope is, of course, the pedestrian ways along Tremont and then along, right in front of our city hall, in front of our property and reconfiguring the intersection. Right now, the status in that project, we're working on developing the concepts and on the second meeting in February, we'll actually present those preliminary concepts and seek direction from council if we're heading in the right direction. And then from there, we'll start talking to the public and the stakeholders involved in the project to make sure that everybody has input into that. Sediment study, we're doing a detailed update and task and schedule, it'll be presented in the January 16th meeting to you. And the same with the development impact fees, detailed update and tasks and schedule will be presented January 16th. Those projects are still underway, but I'll give you the tasks and schedules on those. Storm damage, the recent storms that we had, we had damage to the Rock Revetment again. We had five locations and we just finished those repairs with the concrete. That was what was holding up those repairs along the Rock Revetment because we didn't have any cement powder actually available because with our one ready-mixed plant on the island here, there was projects at the Trailhead, at the Zane Gray project and also our other projects that we couldn't get deliveries on the concrete until more product came on to the, on to the island. And also we were focusing on the South Beach damage and we needed concrete in those locations because we had three holes with significant undermining of the seawall. The, the velocity of the waves was actually sucking out the sand underneath the footing of the seawall and then it was like a vacuum and vacuumed all the sand, a lot of the sand that we just replaced within this last season. And then, you know, that's not good news. But we did go in there and we went two foot deeper than the previous excavations in those holes, put rock and large 12-inch rock and concrete to stabilize so that that hopefully wouldn't occur again. Then came up with sand slurry with aggregate base and then we'll spread out the remaining sand for the season to make it look like there's sand on the whole beach, but it won't be at that level until the next season again and we'll be asking you to be able to put some more sand.
Did that happen on Middle Beach?
We did lose sand on Middle Beach, but we didn't have any sinkholes. We didn't have, yeah, so that's, that was stable.
How much sand, did we lose all the sand on Middle Beach like we did on Peach Beach and?
I think we're going to be at the same level that we were last year and that was $31,000 in sand that we replaced. Those are the three beaches. And that was just, that, even if we didn't have the sinkholes, that sand just gets up and goes away with that velocity of waves that are coming over the wall.
But there wasn't as much damage on Middle Beach?
No.
So, so the sand that, that is on the lower section of beach, which it's almost complete on Middle Beach, protects the seawall, obviously. I mean, me and you stood there and saw that the waves were breaking against the wall on South Beach where the sand has dissipated or has been taken off and dissipated, both factors. And we saw over by the restrooms, by the pier, the waves were breaking before the seawall. So actually that sand on the lower level, which I've been saying for years now, actually protects the seawall and it protects the entire front of our community, so.
And I think, well, a lot of the, the energy was focused, the nor-eater, northeastern, you know, waves coming in, it was focused on that South Beach and then also that Revetment on the other side. And we saw tremendous energy being dissipated right at that seawall there, too.
That, that's because there's no sand there to protect and it wouldn't even be nearly as much energy projected on the seawall if the sand was present down below. I hope the Dr. Jenkins was able to understand and see how that storm manifested and how important it is for us to have the sand on that lower level, not just for liability issues, but also to protect, that, for liability issues, to protect the general public, but liability issues for protecting the seawall and the upper level and to keep us from paying that much money because all that sand that we lost is, I don't believe that we lost as much on Middle Beach as we did on the beaches where there was so much power projected against the wall, it would go up and then it would, the northeast winds would take it over onto the beach and then would have to be, be pulled back into the, into the ocean. So my case is just as strong as it's ever been. We need to get the lower section of that beach fixed and real soon. And I, and I know you told me that Dr. Jenkins is going to come up with some ideas on how to do that, but I think we need to do it sooner than later.
Well, that's, that's what that second phase of the sediment study is, to have all those alternatives so that.
Has anybody talked to him since the last time he was here and let him know exactly what the state of affairs of our situation is because it's getting pretty serious now? Because what we're doing is instead of fixing what needs to be fixed, we continue to fix behind the wall, which I think is, is an okay idea. That is, if all the sand down below is going to be gone, but it's just going to incrementally keep on costing the city more and more money for these sinkholes that are continuously going to keep on appearing. And I think we should just let him know, we need him to come up with some.
And I have, and also when we were out there that day reviewing, during the storm, I was taking video and I did send that to Michael Baker, so for both the Mole Project and the sediment study, that's one of my tasks I was out there doing was capturing that. So I could see it firsthand, but also I could send that video to him. So, and more to come on the sediment study when we do that. So that's all good stuff.
Cool.
And, so you'll see by this Friday, South Beach be back open, ready to go. You'll see Step Beach be back open, ready to go, but it's not going to have as much sand as it did before. And then we'll finish, the last thing we have to do on Pebbley Beach Road is fix the shoulders, which we'll do that before this Friday. So for the holiday here, we should see all that come back together and we should be fully back up to speed and, and beyond the storm. Okay, and then the mole substructure. Okay, and then the Mole substructure, we have an update. Okay, so we're under, getting environmental permit. We're at 30% design. I have the preliminary design report in hand. I'll be reviewing that this, this week. And then we'll be meeting with the consultants to see what all that means and how, what their projected fixes for the substructure piece of that. So, all of their diving, all of their studies, all of that has now put this 30% design together. So, we got the sequa draft document to the city by the 28th of this month. The coastal development permit application were to us and signed by the interim city manager. The Army Corps permit was signed by the interim city manager, and then also the regional quality control board. So, all permitting is now going in and being submitted. And then, three-week look ahead on that. So, we'll complete those permit applications. We'll talk about that design report, and we'll continue with the various study and the repair plans specifications.
Bob, I have a question. So, because I know that has to be done, but all of the things that we're talking of, well, we're not all talking about, but when we were talking about the redesign of the Mole and whatever, it would be done in, would that be the same footprint of the Mole?
In the second phase, if we wanted to potentially, and that's what we talked with the California Coastal Commission about increasing the footprint of where the ramp is, potentially bringing that up to the same level as the other deck. It's already a disturbed space. Could we capture that and get that real multimodal facility that we're looking for? How do you make your transit buses? How do you make your tours? How do you make your taxis? How do you make somebody bringing in autowets into there? How do you make some of your businesses thrive with a better transportation system? Having more space up on the deck could make that happen.
And the sediment study, whatever comes out of that, wouldn't impact-
We are actually, we had a phone conference with our consultants considering our sediment study, our Mole studies, sea level rise, considering all the things that we're working on, and making sure that all of the projects and products of those projects are being coordinated so that we're not double-spending on those, so that we're aware. A lot of the same consultants are working on the projects, but we're making sure that if another consultant doesn't have that product, we say, "Here, here is a study. You don't need to do that piece of it for us to pay again." Okay? So, Vaughn's, mostly, I mean, that would be the building department, but as it gets out into public right-of-way, that's where it involves public works. And then also, I'm the redundant source of inspection if our building official is not on the island. So, I've also been covering on that, just to make sure on those larger projects that I can get there. But, the demo's complete. You see that, all the buildings are slicked off to a piece of dirt. And three quarters, three-quarters of the excavation is complete now, and the new pad will be completed soon. So, you'll still see trucks, 30 trucks a day for the next week or so coming into the site. And that'll be most of the stuff that's being hauled in, and that's from out at Jordal bringing that in for us. And then, everything else will be site material, the dirt that was excavated out of that hole. So, realize what the soil engineer was saying is that there was potentially clays down there, and they wanted to over-ex that so that we could get those soils out of there that wouldn't be very good materials to build upon, and then place some rock, 18 inches of rock, and that's what we imported. And then, from there, place in compact, 95% compaction, the native material, and then build the pad four feet high. So, you'll see a grand pile of dirt out there right now. The contractor is loving the weather. The soils engineer, I did meet with him yesterday, and he really likes the conditions out there. He said the soil is great. We didn't find the clays that we were expecting. We didn't find the moisture contents down there that we were expecting. So, that's good news because after this pad is built, it was anticipated to have at least 90 days of settlement time. So, that means there would be no construction, and it would just be settling. That may be shortened, and that really helps kind of that back-end date maybe move up, you know, to completion because they're looking at, this time next year is actually when that store would open. So, be a year of construction. So, positions were recruitment for the maintenance superintendent. We received four applications, not as robust as I thought. So, I'll be finishing the review of those and then interviewing every one of those candidates and see if we can find somebody that could give me a hand on some of our maintenance activity. So, realize that we used to have a maintenance coordinator. This position that we created was to oversee our garage, our public works, and our harbor maintenance functions, and to help me out, and would be a direct report to me as I'm doing those duties right now, in addition to all the construction capital projects and being the director. Recruitment for the mechanics, realize that Luis Rubio did accept the third code enforcement position. And so, he's gonna be a code enforcement officer, so we're losing him as a mechanic. So, I guess if a code enforcement vehicle breaks down, he can step in and do double duty. But, we're wishing him well on that. But, we're also got an open till filled recruitment out there for mechanics, and we are seeing interest, and we are seeing good candidates on that. So, we feel like we'll be successful. And the last item we'll talk about is a work plan. I'm getting a work plan for our department together, and that would lay out everything since I've been here, what I've heard, what I think that we need, what I've been told that we need, and put that in a work plan. And then we can decide, we'll talk, and then we can decide, you know, where we draw that line of what we can accomplish, you know. And so, then that would get us that snapshot of the next six months of truly what our focus in public works would be.
Great. Thank you. That was very thorough.
Question, Bob, before you go. Do we have, to your knowledge, do we have anybody exercising the valves?
Yes, that's part of the task that ES is delegated to do.
They do, so they have a, like, every four months or every three months, or whatever they do, to exercise those valves?
Yes, they have a schedule, and they have a spreadsheet that they fill in when they exercise, and if there's anything that they find, they report that. And so, and I can get that to you.
That's great, because that's the reason we got in the situation we were in.
Absolutely.
But, okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, who's next?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Merry Christmas, happy holidays to you and your families. Anybody wanna go in with me on a stopwatch for Bob? Three-minute timer on it, something that might- Real quick, I'll, I'll keep mine in three. Thursday, holiday, we're doing the holiday gift, the holiday dinners, the Christmas dinners. Thanks for the generous contributions of some of our community members. We're doing 50 instead of the 40 that we did for Thanksgiving. So, there'll be the teen center on Thursday afternoon. Those families have been notified. We had some gift certificates as well that'll go out to ones that were individuals that requested it, or just a couple that requested, and they didn't need a dinner for four or six. So, that's happening on Thursday. Friday, we wrap up our flag football signups, our pre-registration flag football signups for the program stops, starts at the first weekend in January. So, Friday afternoon will be the last day for early registrations for that. Friday, we also is the last day we're taking proposals for our recreation master plan. We've had an RFP out for the last four weeks, contacted eight to 10 companies that do RFPs. We've received two at this point. We're hoping to see a couple more come back. And we'll get back to you at the first meeting in January in regards to moving forward with that. The first of the year, we're planning for January 2nd. I think we're right on track for that. We will be launching our recreation software program. The community will be able to register online. We'll have some community outreach there on how to go about registering for a senior class, registering for a teen program. You can look at what's available. Tremont's available. There's a calendar on there. It's got some really neat functions. One of the nice things that it'll also feature will be credit cards. We'll be able to take credit cards for any of our recreation programs, and then maybe something down the road that we can do here as well with, with credit cards. And then, lastly, I invite you all to join myself and Val. I think I've got her, at least in the audience, that's gonna join me. Our polar bears swim, 7:15 on New Year's Day. Councilman Sampson, possibly, possibly, possibly. 7:15 at Casino Point, and then we'll do a plunge. That's, wet suits are optional. And then we're gonna do a plunge on Middle Beach at 11 o'clock. We'll have some refreshments, light refreshments afterwards. So, that is bathing suits, bathing suits only for that one. So, on New Year's Day, both of those, 7:15 swim, and then 1 o'clock to kick off your, or, excuse me, 11 o'clock to kick off your-
11 o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you. And finance director.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. The finance department's been very busy in the last few months. The audit of the fiscal year ending June 30th is going well. The field audit just was just before Thanksgiving, where the auditors are physically here looking at our paperwork. This month, we're responding to their additional data requests, and we're planning on finalizing the financial statements in January and presenting those in the first meeting of February. The visitor-generated revenue is, was emailed to you earlier this evening, and we'll have that posted on our website tomorrow. Overall, the revenue's looking good and on track with the budget. It's 4% higher for the last 12 months compared to the prior 12 months. Cruise ship warfage is up 26% because of the two rate increases that we did this year, this calendar year. And sales tax is up about 10%, and that's primarily due to prior-year adjustments. We hire a consultant called HDL, and they look at our sales in the city and try to capture more revenue for us, and their efforts pay off. The admissions tax is about the same, down slightly, but all the others are up by about 2% to 3%. We're also on track to present the mid-year financial statements to you at the meeting, the first meeting in February. And that'll also start the budget cycle so that we can get a budget to the city council adopted before June. And lastly, we successfully upgraded our financial software at the beginning of this month. We're still ironing out a few snags, but overall, it responds faster. We're able to run reports faster, and it's easier to export some of the data to our other applications.
Great. Thank you.
Mayor, I need to, I need to go.
Okay. Councilwoman Cassidy is going to have to excuse herself. She has to catch the boat this afternoon, or this evening.
So, I just want to report out that I'll be attending the Gateway City's monthly board meeting on Wednesday, January 3rd. And I apologize, but I do need to exit and catch the boat.
You understand. Merry Christmas.
Good evening. John Hawking, Sheriff's Department. And I promise I'll go real short also here. The Sheriff's Department, everything's going well. We've been working very hard. We've been working with Choices. And an example is today, I was over with Rhonda at the school, and we spoke to a classroom of students. They're basically mentors for students that might be having difficulties or problems, and it went very well. We're also working with the court regarding a juvenile court, a shortstop or a teen court. And as the mayor knows, she's part of that also. And we're trying to put together something that will basically benefit the juveniles before they commit any serious crime. So, if they're starting to get off-track, it will put them back on. And I do not want to take credit for that. It was the mayor and Rhonda. It was, it's just a collaboration of personnel that really worked good together and come up with some good ideas. Also regarding terrorism, we recently did a drill with Southern California Edison. And basically, the drill was a suspicious package was found in a, on their property in a dangerous area with a lot of fuel and so forth. I flew over our department's arson and explosive detectives, and they basically taught the first responders how to respond to a suspicious package that could be an explosive. It was, the whole program went very well. Southern California Edison, I can't thank them enough. They were, that's obviously one of our critical facilities in the city of Avalon and on the entire island. So, it was very, went very well working with them. And a couple noteworthy arrests that we've made in the last week or so. We arrested one person for possession of cocaine. We arrested a student for threatening a teacher at the school. And we also arrested a person that was under the influence of a stimulant, methamphetamine. And we got them some psychiatric help that they also needed to just try to basically make their life much better. And that's a very short recap of what we've been doing.
Thank you. I know you all have been busy, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Any other departments? We're good, huh? No fire, no harbor, no play. Oh, there's the Harbor Department.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'll be standing in for Harbor Master Point Dexter tonight. He's feeling under the weather.
Oh, okay. A lot of people are.
Because of me being called in tonight, I'll be glad to ask, answer any questions. I don't really have much prepared for you tonight. I do want to speak to Tim Mitchell's memorial that we had to postpone due to the weather probably 10 days ago. That's been rescheduled for December 30th, 1400 hours, 2:00 P.M. And we'll give you more detailed notice when we can. The only other thing I have is that the mooring permit renewals that we sent out, those have been coming back in and signed and coming in with the checks. So, that's quite a lot of revenue coming in. Obviously, we've had a lot of weather in the last couple weeks. If anybody has any questions on that, feel free to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'll defer, you know, any technical stuff back to JJ when he's here next, next council meeting.
Well, yes, so after that last storm, and there was that boat that was parked out, that was anchored out at Pebbley.
Abilony Point?
Yes, and there was all this debris. So, I ran into Harbor Patrolman Kirk Cameron, and I asked him about that. I said, "Now, there's all this litter, I mean, big pieces of litter, masks and everything else. What happens?" And he says, "Because it's there, that's the county sheriff's responsibility to, to follow up with that." And I was gonna walk over to the sheriffs, and I didn't. And I don't even know, Kevin Hogg, if you're aware of that. But, because, and whether the person can afford it or not for, to extract it, at least that person should be responsible for doing some kind of cleanup.
That's correct. I mean, generally, the city puts pressure on the vessel owner to have insurance that covers that, the cleanup of the wreck. In this case, where these vessels stay outside of our jurisdiction, it's difficult for us. It's a caveat that when they come into the harbor, that goes into place. But, in the case of this boater, you know, it's more, they have to take it upon themselves to go collect the debris. Maybe sometimes I would assume, get somebody to provide them a trashcan or a dumpster and start loading that stuff in on themselves. But, yes, outside of our jurisdiction, LA County, that would be their concern.
I mean, now two weeks or however many, I haven't been out there. But, is that stuff probably still, a lot of it's still sitting there? Do you think it's all just washed out to sea?
No, typically, it stays on the beach for quite a while. I did have one discussion with the mariner. The mariner was able to, from what I understand, cut up his mast or get it out of there. He got some, of somebody with a vehicle, and they got the mast off of Abilony Point. There's some wreckage that remains down there on the bottom. And then the rest, the floating debris, ended up mostly down at Pebbley Beach. Some of it ended up in the harbor, and our harbor sanitation crews have been picking up that on a regular basis. But, yes, it would be one of the things where the mariner would have to be contacted and see what they can provide. And in a lot of cases, they just don't have the ability to provide that.
And they wouldn't have the insurance? That's probably one of the reasons they're out there.
They typically don't. Otherwise, they come into the harbor, seek the safe refuge.
Right. Well, maybe there can be a little coordination and a little muscle or something on part of the sheriffs if that happens again, so that it's-
Right.
Implicit, yeah. Okay, no, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions, or?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we're going to Councilmember Report.
How about City Manager?
Oh, and let's talk to the City Manager and City Attorney.
I have none.
Okay.
I have none.
See, I knew. I had ESP. Okay, Councilmember Report. Who would like to start?
Well, we can put, kind of putting together, I don't know if my application's finished process yet, but we're going to process, we're going to try to get a little Christmas Eve cart parade down Front Street, or down through the city, just go looking through, just do, looking at all the decorations and everything with all the little kids, with my grandkids, everybody, but anybody's welcome if they want. If they have a golf cart, decorate it up and follow us, and it only takes about a half hour, forty-five minutes, and hopefully, everybody will come and join us and have a good time.
What time is that?
That's going to be about six-thirty to eight-thirty, but I don't think it'll be that long.
There's not that many lights up in Avalon, other than.
Anyway, that's going to happen Christmas Eve on Sunday.
Oh, that's.
Starting point is going to be on Clemente Street.
I want to know why I'm receiving information about the casino dock when I thought that was a closed session night, I mean, we weren't talking about it.
I don't know what you're talking, what, what do you mean?
Well, I got this memo right here from David, and it's basically giving us the inflated price that it's going to, that we're going to be paying the casino dock. And then I got something from you here also that said, let's see, it was basically stating that, it's a management update, that we're not proceeding on with casino dock contract because we're waiting for a negotiation for it, or?
I have no idea. These, these things were sent by David, not by me.
Okay, so, oh, it's all, it's, it's public knowledge now, so, do we talk about it in open, in session, or what's, what's legal and what's not? Because I got some information here. You know, I'm just wondering, why can't we proceed with that and, and put that, put that money in a trust instead of just holding up the whole project because we can't come to an agreement for the negotiation of the casino dock? So, says here, over twenty years, three, out of three percent inflator price, it's starting at a hundred forty thousand dollars, we're going to be paying three million, seven hundred thousand. The two percent inflator price, starting at a hundred forty thousand, and it ends at three million, three point four million, and the third one is three point eight, three point oh eight two million. So, basically, it's, it's giving us a breakdown of what the city's going to be held to pay over twenty years, and it's, it's not sustainable for us. And then it gives us some examples of what we can do, like build a bridge from the walkway over to, to the fuel dock where it is, is another idea of moving the fuel dock somewhere else in, within the city. Anything but pay the island company that absorbent price for that dead piece of land that we don't even really know who owns yet. So I got a problem with that. Also, the restrooms down by the sheriff's station, they're locked all the time, so if you want to use the restroom, you got to go into the sheriff's station to get the key. I don't know where you get the key, actually. Does anybody know?
Captain Hawking.
At the sheriff's station? Because if that's the case, nobody's going to be using the bathroom. And the only reason is people don't want to go into the sheriff's station to ask for the key to go potty.
Right, the bathroom that is located on the sheriff's station side, the entrance door is open all the time. People can go in and out of that. The other one is locked, and they ask, because there was people sleeping in there, some transients were sleeping in there.
In the sheriff's station, in the restroom by the library?
The first one, the handicap accessible one is the one that's always locked.
Yeah, it's the one right after that is open all the time.
So one of them's open all the time?
Yes, sir.
Because I tried to get in there yesterday, and it, it was locked, and I just went somewhere else. Okay.
Yeah, I, that does need to be looked, because I think, though, when we, because we've had this discussion before, especially when the island company did that with the bathrooms in the plaza, that I think they, the sheriffs were going to lock up that other one at ten in the evening. It's not open twenty-four seven, is it?
So, so make the handicap people go over to the sheriff's station. That's what we're doing now? We got to make it easy for handicap people to, to use the restroom. And I'm sorry, people are going, handicap, I mean, transients are going in there and taking advantage of it. Maybe we should look into that and have those people.
I'll look into it, sir. No problem.
Yeah, arrested, or whatever it takes, because if handicap people are suffering, because other people are taking advantage of, of the goodwill of the county, we need to get to the bottom of that, because I've gotten a lot of complaints from people in wheelchairs that are actually friends of mine, that, because we are, we already have some ADA complaint issues in this town, and not having a restroom, a dignified place where somebody can go and not have to, you know, blast for the key like a six-year-old, you know, I think it would be nice just to have an open spot like that, especially if the county taxpayers pay for it. So, what phone calls we have to make as a council, maybe Denise, we can call the county supervisor's office, whatever we need to do, but we got to fix that problem. That's a big problem. And then what are we doing with the e-buses? Can anybody tell me, Scott? Can you talk to me about that?
There's some discussions still going on about whether the fix is, is acceptable or not.
Okay, so it's going forward?
Yes, it's going forward.
I did have a call today from Frank Dop at Transit Concepts, who went personally and checked out the, the fix, but we played phone tag, Joe, and I haven't spoken to him.
Okay, okay, so we're still moving forward with it. Yeah, because the community's getting frustrated with public transit service, and it's kind of at a standstill right now, and it's one of those things, it's like banging their head against the wall. It's like, we've been, we've been dealing with it for so many years, and I'm just, I'm just tired of it. We like the buses, we don't like the problems we're having with it. We like the fact that we're working real hard, and we, the city, community spend a lot of money on public transit, but the problem is with the buses, you can get on the buses at Vaughn's and take them over to Marilla Street, and you still got to walk up the hill with your groceries. So we, we need to complete the loop, complete the process, and make it something that the community actually wants to access, because right now, we've lost all the community ridership. I mean, there's hardly anybody who's going to ride the, the public transit. Anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you, Joseph. January fourth, I'm going to go to the League of California Cities, Los Angeles County Division Meeting in downtown L.A., and then on the seventh of January, there's Contract Cities Legislative Day, where we go up there and rattle the cage of our elected representatives to try to get them aware of the city, cities' issues, which there's a bunch of.
How, how do we decide what issues we want you to talk on?
Give me anything you want.
I mean, should, should we not kind of maybe ask Denise, or, so we figure out what you're going to be talking about?
Well, the Legislative is a group of, like, all of Ben Allen's cities that are there, we'll go in and talk to Ben and give him the general, big city stuff. We've already talked to Ben about, you know, so much specific needs, like water issues, and I think he sees issues. So if, if there's something big, you know, ring up, just let me know.
Okay, that's on the seventh of Jan.
Seventh of January. And I have, was contacted by someone at the island company who wants to continue the process of fleshing out the Los Casillas project. So they want to work with our staff to get it to possibly a point where that they'll be ready to come back to the signing commission, do a conceptual presentation, because I think most of us will agree that housing is a good thing, and we need to, you know, continue to look at some of the boy housing. So I would like to say it's okay for our staff to talk to their staff to flesh out that development.
I didn't think there was any problem with them communicating with us at all, Elliot, but we'll, do you want us to reach out to them, or they reach out to us?
Yeah, we can reach out to them, because it's, they hit me on the street.
Is it talking parallel to the MOU, or?
No, I think the MOU's, MOU and Tremont, I think right now are on hold. I think we've seen differences of opinions, and so I think we've got to work through those issues, but I think they still want to flesh out the project of Los Casillas, and I think there's a lot of questions that have been already asked that need to have the project better defined, so we can find out what the answers are.
And defined by the planning department?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes, that's fine.
And our household of two people turns into eleven, starting on Saturday for a week.
Every day. That's it?
Yeah. Some people down to your place.
We got, I'm leaving town, so I don't care what you do with our house. Last week, we met with Catalina Island Medical Center staff, and the CAO, and Stacy, and David, and representative from Supervisor Hahn's office, or Linda, and myself, and L.A. County Mental Health, to talk about still trying to get over, get mental health services over here. So it was a, it was an interesting conversation, and the next step is they will be coming, and are also going to be, also mentioned the drug and alcohol thing, so they're also going to bring over public health, I believe, and they're all, we're all going to sit around the room and figure out what to do, and figure out how to get services to Avalon. Is that kind of in a nutshell, Stacy?
Yeah. The teen court people meant, folks meant again last week, Rhonda, me, Cindy wasn't able to be there, the judge, Captain Hawking, some people from shortstop over town that are representatives of Long Beach Unified School District, they brought, they brought three or four folks from over there. So they're all going to be coming, the upshot of that is, oh, we're going to have the first, the shortstop program is basically a more, more of a school run, but also we, sounds like we're going to be referring them even from law enforcement. They get into a little bit of trouble, and it's two, three-hour classes. The parents are involved, there's homework and whatever, but try to get some of these, just the kids are at risk, to try to get them to turn around a little earlier. So we're looking forward to that. We'll also be recruiting, they, they usually have two people that are trained to run the groups, and I think they say they eat, they bring over attorneys even, or something, or one of those gentlemen sure was, but they also may be looking, going forward that we, oh, gosh, that chiropractic work didn't quite work on my back, it just got a twinge, a twinge. But we may be training people locally to do those classes, so then there's not the expense and whatever involved in bringing these folks over. So anyway, more of that to come. There will be advertising and all that other good stuff. And I met with Vicki Johnson of the Chamber of Commerce, because Jim Luke Johanna's been very busy with personal issues. We, we met and started talking a little bit more about the, the Art Commission, so I did look up Vicki's and the audience, I did find some things that I will be sharing, but I'll be gone for ten days, so we'll get back after the first of the year. And I will be gone, I'll be back on the thirty-first. Hey, that's it. Oral communication, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes, and no action will be taken.
Okay, seen that. Consent calendar.
We only have ten items on the consent calendar this evening, since you already did item number six. The first one is actions of December fifth, two thousand seventeen. The second one is to approve the total expenditure amount of two million, one hundred eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. Third item is to appoint a voting delegate to the Gateway Cities', yes, sorry, the GWMA Board Member, that's another alternate to replace David Jenkins. The fourth one is to request, to solicit proposals. We have three contracts that are due, say, between March first and April fifteenth, I believe, and that is for our public trash collection, the yellow jacket and bean mitigation, the public restroom cleaning services, and the management of our public showers at Casino Way. The fifth one is to authorize expenditure of not to exceed six thousand dollars, and that's for our temporary holding facility for the animals. We found a great location out there at Roaring Canyon, and we're very pleased with that. That six thousand does not include the work from Public Works, though. That's just for materials. Number six, you already did. Number seven is to approve the addendum to number two, to my first amended employment agreement for the chief administrative officer. Number eight is the two thousand eighteen waterside permits, and that's to authorize the harbor master to renew the attached list. Number nine is the authorization to continue the monthly artesian market on Crescent Avenue. The number ten is to ratify prior actions for the patrol boats number three and four. Those expenses have already been spent, and so it's to also to amend the fiscal year seventeen, eighteen budget to increase the amount by eighteen thousand dollars. Number eleven is the City Council acting as the Avalon Housing Authority, and that is to adopt the resolution approving the Housing Authority's Accessor Agency's annual report for the fiscal year sixteen, seventeen.
Okay, Council, it's your pleasure. I would like to pull item number three.
I'd like to pull number nine.
Number nine, and I would like to just ask the question of item eight, which is the waterside permit. Okay, is there motion on the other ones? At least, if you can get it, you got it, I know you're good at this.
I'd like to move staff on one, two, four, five, seven, nine, no, ten and eleven.
We already did six, so.
Right, very good, Ollie.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there discussion from the audience? Call for the vote?
Okay, four ayes and one absent. Councilmember Cassidy. Item number three, I pulled it, but Joseph, did you want to, Councilmember, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I'd like to know, how do the voting, how do the voting, is, it says appointing a voting delegate, so that concerns me, because I don't, I don't understand, does the city have a policy on how we look at our water and how the decisions are made, and how the agenda is brought up in the Gateway Region Integrated Water Management Joint Powers of Authority? So, I just like to know how they come up with their agenda, and then how our representative represents us and what we feel about the items that are brought to their attention? So, because they're, this person who we're appointing on this board, and as you know, I'm very passionate and concerned about our water, not just for the island, but for California in general, and I just, I've never heard, I mean, we've had somebody in this, in this, in this position for quite a while, and I've never heard any kind of feedback from the meetings that have transpired. Can you speak about that? Can anybody tell me about what this board represents and how they come up with, with their agenda?
Well, I'll attempt to. Of course, I was appointed as one, and being a new employee at the, the city here, you know, I haven't been to one of these, but my understanding and talking to Jordan Moreau, that we wanted a seat at this table, to be able to bring potential grant funds and make everybody aware that Avalon existed on the map, because in all of L.A. County, we didn't even exist, and it didn't give us that source of grant funds, availability of grant funds. By being a member on this and having people being voting members of the board, it made us eligible for that. So it put us a, a seat at the table, and so, and that's, not that I, I, by the time that I do attend as one of these alternates, I'm going to be more up to speed on it, but that's what I can talk about tonight.
Seat at the table costs us fifteen thousand dollars annually, correct?
Yes. Um, that's what's anticipated that it would be if we attended every meeting over there.
Or if we don't attend every meeting. Or if we don't attend every meeting. I don't get it. Oh, is that the cost of travel and?
Yeah, Jordan can also speak up.
Thank you, Jordan.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that the cost of travel?
No, that's.
$15,000 is the membership dues for the board. We approved that when we first joined in.
2015?
Yep, 2015. That's what we brought to council as part of the budget. What happens is that pays for the executive officers of the G W M A, who then work on behalf of all the representatives of this group to pursue water funding opportunities for this group. Irwams are created to recognize watershed areas and how they have relationships, but each city or water board may not talk to each other. Our part with Avalon and Catalina Island is, we're an island, so we're not directly tied to any geographical watershed. So politically, we aligned ourselves with the Gateway Water Management Authority because we're part of the Gateway COG, and this is a sister agency to those. So then it allows them to, like what works director Bob said was, keep us on the map. There are funds specifically earmarked for Irwams through all the different propositions and bonds that if we're not a part of one, then we're not eligible for that money.
Right.
An example is when we first joined, they were finishing up Proposition 84 funds and had a smart meter grant that the Gateway was applying for. So to upgrade meters to smart meters, which helps efficiency and understanding of water flow, you know, on the residential side and commercial side. And one of their cities had dropped out and they said, Avalon, can you step in? And so we stepped in, brought it to council, approved a resolution to be a part of this funding. Unfortunately, when it came out, the cost of the program, we still had to pay in money. Edison wasn't ready at that time to move forward with smart meters, so we couldn't get those funds. But the point being is that when funding opportunities come up like that, we're eligible for it. And so Gateway sets their agenda. Board members can, you know, raise issues, raise concerns, you know, say what's in our need and our interest. At the time, just before I was taken off of the board previously, we had been having meetings with Southern California Edison on a monthly basis and reported out after these meetings because we were coordinating our effort to share in funding opportunities and projects and how those can match up and how we could help each other. We had started sending over those meeting notes to council, but then that ended about July of last, last year. And so there was no more follow-up at that point after that. I anticipate if we're able to start with the meetings with Edison again, or if we, you can even report out after Gateway. The hard part is, is most of the time Gateway meetings don't directly affect us because, again, we're an island and we're not directly affected to the 710 corridor or any of those projects. But if we don't participate and we don't attend, then we'll never get any funding and we won't be eligible for any fund opportunities.
How often are the meetings?
Once a month.
Okay, yeah, I think it's a good thing and I think you're a good representative for the city. I just want to make sure that we have, that we're kept in the know on exactly what's discussed and if it has anything to do with us, or it might have anything to do with us, and then how, how much of the city's resources are being put into pursuing the grants? Because I think that it's important that we pursue these, but.
That's, that's the nice thing about being part of this organization is we don't have to use very many city resources to pursue funds. That's what this group does for, on our behalf. And they're subject magic experts, whereas we may not have the expertise or experience to navigate the complex world of grant fundings and what opportunities are available. They do that for us and they do that on behalf of the board. And some projects they may do for a specific set of cities or a region, or it may be a project like smart meters that a lot of different people can come a part of. But most, anything that requires a grant funding requires ultimately council approval. So if you were to get involved with something to the point where, like the smart meter program, we brought a resolution to you for approval to say, yes, it's okay to be a part of this funding, you know, effort, and then we would move forward. Because at that point, it would take more staff resources to follow up with it. But on the routine kind of day-to-day elements of it, you know, we could pass you along the agenda so you could just see what's on the agenda and if anything raises your attention, you could get ahold of us. We could, I'm sure we could do that.
Yeah, that.
The agenda's only sent out about a week before the meeting, so there's not a whole lot of time, you know, for a comment review, follow-up and things like that.
Yeah.
Again, it's not necessarily too involved unless it gets to the point of there's an actual funding opportunity, at which point we would be involving council anyway.
Okay, that's great. Man, I appreciate your insight.
And thank you for coming out from there.
And we can also ask staff to give a summary of the meeting when they come back and provide it to the council.
Mayor Protan.
I just have one picky question. On the resolution, after the effective date of the proof's going to be represented, it says to apply for the funds available to the city of Avalon allocated for transit improvements?
Whoops.
Yeah.
That's very good.
Huh?
That's very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, and along that line, and I talked to city manager about this. Because Jordan was so much involved with the water before and because Audra is involved in a lot of all the transportation stuff, I would like Jordan to be the initial contact, the initial person and then Bob and then Audra, or whatever other order we want to do the next to. I know I'd be pulling him away from you for, for a day a month, but I think it's important that, since he's kind of been our water guy, that I would really like to see him have that role instead of Audra.
So change the resolution to reflect that Jordan Monroe would be appointed as the board member representing the city and the other two would be the alternate.
That's what I would like to have, yes. But, okay, council.
That's fine.
Move the amended resolution.
Move the amended resolution from Ole, seconded by?
Myself.
Okay, moved and seconded. Comment? Call for the vote.
Comment. Are you, did you speak to this guy that I referred you to? He's supposed to be working on getting grant money, no charge to the community.
Is that the guy that came over to visit?
He came over to visit. I had a packet from him.
We made initial contact. I think we need to re-engage.
Okay, because he's been getting back to me and he, he swears he can help our community at, at no cost.
Okay. We'll make another contact with him tomorrow then.
And he can get us grants. And I believe that's an area that we, you can use some help in.
Absolutely.
And I'm going to, I'm going to get him to call you again and it would be nice if you arrange a meeting with him and I will attend that meeting and then we can, we can start moving forward on the things he can help us with. Because we need help. And he swears he can help us, so.
We'd love to leverage our dollars.
Okay.
With grant funds too.
And they've provided billions of dollars in grant money to cities throughout, throughout California. I'm really sold on this guy, so.
Great, okay. And item number eight?
So the vote is four eyes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Moving right along. Item number eight. My question was, is, for Finance Director Bob Mesher. There was, oh, no, or you. It's kind of a fiscal question.
Uh-oh.
But, but you would know too. Is everybody, with the exception of Island Enterprises, I'll go in there in a minute, is everybody paid up? Bob Mesher?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Okay, no, you both know, everybody's paid up.
Yeah, J.J. checked with our office and everyone was paid up with the exception of the amount that was determined in the most recent city council meeting for the Island Enterprises. So that has not been paid yet. But everything else is up to date.
Okay, but there is a line on the staff report that says with respect to fees, rents and admission taxes, good standing includes execution of and compliance with a payment plan? Nobody's on a payment plan right now?
Not to my knowledge and I should be knowledgeable about any payment plan.
And the, and the payment plan is if they have arrears or whatever. Okay, all right. So with regard then to Island Enterprises, because, well, and I guess, and Haley's here and I don't know why Haley's here, but she could talk. I was just curious if there was a need for a payment plan, if that would be something that would be entertained for that $52,000. I mean, and I don't know, again, I don't know what Haley's here for.
I'm actually, good evening.
Good evening, councilmembers.
I'm actually not here about that necessarily, I mean, partially. But we just received this last week, I believe, our amount that is supposed to be paid by December 29th at 5:00 P.M. It's close to $60,000. Let's talk about fair. Let's talk about this theme of fair that the city likes to talk about. If it's not paid by then, that's what I want to know. Clarification, are we not running next year? Is that what the city council is telling us? Is that what our elected members of the council are telling us? A small business in Avalon that we're not going to be able to run if we can't come up with $60,000 or just shy of $60,000 in the dead of winter?
That's why I was asking the question. And when it had the thing about payment plan, that's what I was curious about.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, I mean, it's a huge concern. I don't know if $60,000 is laying around. Do you?
Yeah.
You know, we're not, we're not, I'm not sure which company you think that we are here, but we're very much a small, small business that has been fighting for years to run a successful business here in town. And the council is kind of against us all year long. So that's what I'm trying to find out. Another condition on here, if we're going to be talking about the waterside permit, and if you don't mind me stepping outside of financials, is this special condition, and I'm assuming it has to do with the recent waterside permit that we put in, considering that I just got a letter from the harbor master as well, that states that if we are asking to modify our project, which I also find it very funny that the last meeting, J.J. specifically came out to ask me if he could contact me to discuss the application further. I was never contacted, but instead received this application telling us that if we wanted to bring in these vessels to replace two of the five that are going to be on this new waterside permit, that now Island Enterprises is going to be asked to pay for a harbor congestion study to be done? When was the last time you asked another company to do that? Let's talk about fair. Did you ask Catalina Classic Cruises to do this when they brought in their tenders and clogged up float four and five every Monday and Tuesday? Did you ask them to do it when they kicked off other businesses that their waterside permit stated they had to land on float four and five? Talk to Bob Kennedy. They didn't even want to run on Mondays and Tuesdays because they literally could not land to function on Mondays and Tuesdays because these vessels got brought in. So why are we being asked to pay for a congestion fee? And again, it's ironic because years ago, Island Enterprises, or at the time, Island Navigation, is the one that asked for this congestion study to be done. And now we're going to have to pay for one?
I've never heard anything about that.
I would like to just clarify one thing. The stickler just said that they're replacing two boats. It's not like for like. I believe that what they were proposing to bring in was larger size. I cannot speak to the actual, all the facts of it all, so if this is something that you need to hold over their waterside permit so we could have the harbor master and, President, oh, J.J. was homesick tonight, so he could not.
What I can tell you is, is that the harbor master indicated that there were two new larger boats that would be some of the largest boats in, in the harbor and was expressing concern about with these two new boats that would be substantially large that we would have to do a congestion study?
How about, yeah, how about I clear this up? I'm happy to tell you. In fact, I told Annie about it the day that I turned in the application. One is a 50-foot vessel, okay, so 50-foot vessel is the same size as the Sea View, just to give you guys an idea. The 65-foot vessel, same size as the Nautilus.
So.
Not much larger or any larger than any of the island companies' boats, the Cadillac or our current vessels.
So is anybody else being made to pay this congestion fee in, in the harbor? Or do you know?
No, I think the congestion study is a result of the fact that currently, if you, if you look at the harbor in the summertime, look at the harbor throughout our busy periods, we've got a lot going on. And so I would say there's overall an opinion that some sort of study should be done before we go increasing the size of the vessels and adding more vessels.
So we haven't done a study yet?
Right, no, the study is.
Yet we're giving applications or?
Well, I think the idea.
Certain companies pay this congestion fee?
I think the idea is more spawned by the, the fact that, say, the 65-foot Catamaran vessel that's coming into the pier, there's kind of a choke point on the Joe's Rental Boat side that we have to, we're really concerned with. You have people in paddle boats, people on stand-up paddle boards, and these are major-sized vessels that are operating alongside the pier. They're in gear, they're backing down, they're loading passengers, and then at the same time, we have people in kayaks, people in stand-up paddle boards, people maneuvering around these larger vessels. So it wouldn't, would be prudent to, to think about the study as a way to understand how we're moving forward with all this activity in, in a safe manner.
And how much did we, was there any thought to how much a study like this would cost?
I have no information on that at this time.
Sounds like, but, but this company's already being held to the fire to conform with some kind of.
I see that as a term, if they want to add these two additional vessels, these large vessels, that the burden, it looks like is being placed on them.
Are we doing that with any other boats in the harbor? Like let's say the cruise ship boats or the Catalina Express boats or the Cadillac or the island company boats?
All those are existing permits.
Yeah, but they're part of what's going on and they should all simultaneously get this information.
Yes, sir, but they were approved previously. This, these are two new additional vessels.
We've asked this question before. Where are we, when are we going to start vetting the concerns of an overcrowded harbor? So I guess that answer is right now then.
Yep.
Better now than ever, but if they're going to get some notices to, to conform, then everybody else in the harbor needs to get them too. Because we're starting here, so let's start with everybody.
Let's do it, Cheryl.
Good, Cheryl. I was just going to mention that the two new boats would be running off of the Island Enterprise end float in the summer. That, that's where the biggest concern is.
And what about moorings for those? Because we tried to give them to moorings that we didn't have. So what happens?
They'd be paying nightly as well for those.
But that's not before us today. That is not before us today. Those two vessels are not before us today.
No, that is correct. They are not.
Okay, so, and we have no idea what one of those congestion studies would cost?
We do not at this point, no.
Okay. I personally don't feel like you should put it on their back, but, because somebody else is going to come up to us someday and go, well, what about, what about me?
Well, the, the idea is we need to do the congestion study. We, as a city, need to do this before any larger boats like that are added to our pier that is very congested and the mole that is very congested. We agree with that. They are congested.
Yeah.
And before any boat is added that large, we need to have this study done. They can certainly just wait until we've got the funds and the opportunity to do that. We're just saying that if they want to do it now, they're going to have to participate in that. Because the city's going to need to move, I mean, the city, we should move forward with that.
Well, and even if somebody says, I want to add 30 kayaks to my fleet, or Joe Rental Boat says, I want to add two or three, that's all impact. So it's big or little.
And there's actually a limit on non-powered boats.
For now, but.
Non-powered.
But maybe we'd find out if there's a study that were not congested or, you know, probably.
Yeah, and catamarans are, you know, quite a bit wider than normal boats.
So there's a limit on like paddle boats and paddle boards and kayaks?
There is.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's good.
I believe it's 116. I'm not positive.
116? Because the Phoenix, the Phoenix was a big boat. It was not that maneuverable. And how big was that? Over 160, 80 feet? At least 80, 90 feet? That used to come in the harbor a dozen, a dozen times a day.
Where the Phoenix was, there's two floats now. That's where the island company floats, so they tie the subs up to it. The Phoenix is tied up by the pier. I think we just got to hold it over for.
I kind of would like to hold this over till we get the harbor master here.
I, I kind of would like to hold this over until we get the harbor master here and get a little more information on everything, if that would be okay with...
You're talking about the regular waterside permit?
Yeah.
Because we're not bringing, we're not bringing the modification permit before you today.
Okay.
It's, it's just their standard waterside permit that they've already, already been approved for. And that was for the five, was adding the five shoreboats under 30 feet.
Right.
So maybe we could, you approve it with the special conditions minus item number nine, because if they have to modify the permit, number nine could be brought back, correct? Cheryl?
Item number nine.
Item number nine is the paying for the congestion fee.
Oh, right, yes.
Also the $56,000 of the next...
Well, the issue for that one is...
I would like to see if, since we say that we will do, if they're amenable, I think we should do a payment plan.
Well, if they contact the finance department, I'm sure that Bob would work something out with them.
Yeah, the, the, the point being is that the city council voted to charge them the amount that we're stating here.
Yes.
All we're putting in the, in this item is saying that they need to pay that in order for their permit to be valid for next year.
Because everybody else has.
As everyone else needs to do.
I understand.
And, and if, if they want to come to the finance department to work out some kind of a payment plan, that, I'm, I'm open to that.
Okay, great. That's a good idea, because I'd like to make some direction that we absolutely let them make a payment plan, because I don't think that they actually budgeted this money in their, you know, I, I don't know how anybody possibly could at this point. They're not contesting the fact that they owe it, they're just asking for some lenience. And I'm saying, I think we should give them that.
So the appropriate motion would be then, is you would amend condition number seven, that they either have to pay the fees no later than December 29th, 2017, at 5:00 PM, or enter into a payment plan approved by the finance director as of that date as well.
With a reasonable, within reasonable time.
Within, well, no, no.
Within reason.
By that date, by that date. And that the finance director would approve whatever that, that payment plan is, but it's got to be...
Come back, got to be written down.
It's got to be done by the end of this year.
Is that reasonable, Haley, to work with him, with the finance director?
Sure. That sounds reasonable to work up a payment plan. But again, with the whole thing of fairness, we all ask about, you know, what does everyone else get to do? Well, let's, it's already been voted on, so it's a moot point, but the $56,000 in being charged square footage, no other float in the harbor is paying that. The repair barge pays a lease mooring rate. We all know this from several meetings that we've had earlier in the year, so, but now we are stuck with this huge bill. We have our own float that we maintain every single year. We built, we pay a 7% use fee, and we maintain it. We still pay it to the city during the months that it's installed. And we're being asked, and the example was, that we pay the same square footage as Eric's on the pier. On the pier. We sit in water. We don't sit on a city structure. The mooring gear underneath of us, we pay for. We install the float, we replace all the chains. It's not fair. It's just not fair. And a council member mentioned it, there's a lot of money on the table, so let's go after it. What kind of city council goes after a small business for more money instead of what the right decision is? You guys are just not doing so good in my eyes. And it's not just our company. And I'm sorry, I know that we've had conversations before, Annie, but you know what? When I get comments made to me by council members asking if we're glutton for punishment, I take it personal. I walk into a council meeting and I get asked by city staff if I'm just here to moan and groan about how things aren't fair? I take it personal. We're being attacked. That's the way I see it, and that's the way other members of the community see it as well. It's not fair. And if we can't resolve it here, then we'll have to resolve it outside. I don't know how that's going to happen, but somehow, we are going to come to an amicable agreement. The log said that we made one in the last council meeting, and that is incorrect as well, which is not unlike the log to post false publications, but they're more than welcome to reach out to me, they're more than welcome to call me. I could give them my cell phone number, it's public knowledge, 714-325-0061. Anyone wants to call me and ask me about this, go for it. My phone is available, it's in my back pocket right now. But I'm just, I'm just so disappointed with all of this. I've had it. Literally, I was told, go for it. Let them have it tonight. This is not the town that I brag about to people on the boat who tell me today, a mother and their son, this is their first time to the island, and they are so excited, and I give them restaurant recommendations. Yet here I am, trying to provide entertainment for these visitors coming to the island, and you guys are just tearing us down because you want more money. Tell me how that's fair. That's all.
Let me ask you something. How, how is it that the repair barge pays a lease, a lease fee, yet they have to pay square footage? Can anybody explain that to me?
Joe, that, that issue, we're not comparing apples to apples, and that issue was so many years ago. I could certainly pull out the file, it's about that thick. It came to council so many times, that whole repair barge issue. I could certainly get you an answer on that, Joe. I, I would just be guessing tonight, and I don't want to do that.
Okay.
But as I brought up before, the yacht clubs have private floats in, Joe's got a private float in, Hamilton Co.'s got a private float in there, and none of those guys are paying anything. And I think if we're going to charge somebody something, we should charge everybody, because they're all sitting over our dirt.
Well, the motion before the council is on this waterside permit, because you already established what the fee would be at the last meeting, is to whether you want to allow them to negotiate a payment plan with the finance director.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd like to make the motion as you described it, and I can't repeat what you said, but I can say that, that you do have to speak to Bob. Do you remember the element, do you have to speak to Bob before, I believe, the 29th?
Yes.
And then agree to the lease terms, and then Bob will give you an extension or some kind of a payment plan? That's absolutely reasonable. And we're not, we're not here to tear you down. And if any staff member is making derogatory comments that make you feel uncomfortable, I'd say you take that directly to me, and I will, I will do something about it. Not to directly to my staff member, but I will take it to, to their manager, and I will have that dealt with.
Thank you, Joe. I will say that I only bring it up because I think it's unprofessional. I really have much thicker skin than that.
Absolutely. No, but I don't think anybody should make you feel inferior in any way, shape, or form.
I don't.
You're a very good customer of ours, and we value your patronage toward the community and what you've provided this community, and your father, and your whole family for the generations. And if somebody's not making you feel right, and I'm sorry that we've had to come to terms with what we've had to do with your businesses recently, and it's, and it's, it's a shame, but I think we can go on, we can live through this. You got, your company can survive and thrive.
Well, I hope so. Because you have to keep in mind that, yes, I am second generation here in Avalon, and this business is what I intend to continue doing. But as I have mentioned before, during outside conversations, the way the city is going and the way they're voting on projects, not just ours, but all projects, I don't know that that's possible unless I jump ship and work for the city or work for the island company. I don't see a future here in Avalon, the way this council is going. And it's very sad and very unfortunate.
That's true.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. There's been a motion. There's second. I'll second it. Did you second it?
He seconded it.
Call for the vote. Three ayes, Marshall Sampson Hernandez, one no, Ole Olsen. Okay, so item number 13.
No, item number...
Number nine.
Nine.
Good evening again. Before you, as a recommendation, to move forward with the artisan market that we have started, we've got about three months of, of running with it. We've had some success, we've had some, some negative feedback about it. It's kind of spelled out in your, in your staff report, but in general, the idea blossomed from some comments from the community to try and bring back the farmer's market, I think, that once took place in the metrople marketplace. We pursued that, pursued those avenues, didn't get anywhere with the person who was doing it at the time. We got a little bit of feedback, but not somebody that wanted to, to continue it. Had some citizens in the community who wanted to see us pursue a market of some sorts. Together, a collaboration came to do a farmer's market along with a artisan market, bring local artisans in as well, to have enough of a platform to, to provide a market of some sort. So that's how we came up with the artisan market. We started it in September, had a September show, a monthly show in September, October, November, had 10, 11 each of the, the three months. The original plan was to try, you know, a 90-day period, reevaluate, and that's kind of where we are now. I have been requested to make a, a chamber meeting in regards to it. They had some concerns about some of the, what they felt some of their, their members' unfair competition, not so much with the, the food that was being provided. We had fruits and vegetables, we had some baked goods and those types of things, as some of the artists that we had there. Their recommendation is that we, you know, take it off of Front Street, you know, take it back up, you know, possibly up here on a Thursday night. My general feeling was it wasn't, wouldn't work up here. We needed the traffic of both the, the tourists that we had coming through, as well as the, the locals, the community at large. So I met with them, it was about a week before Thursday, it was a week before our November market. We'd already put it out, so we did go along with the, the November market, let them know that it would bring it back to council, and here we are for, you know, for this discussion and whether it was for it or not.
Okay.
Well, one of the things I heard, Dan, you know, some of the people that are reestablished businesses in town, they're paying a percentage to the city?
Mm-hmm.
And apparently, with all this, they're not, they're not getting a percentage, or they're paying a percentage off to the city at all? Any of the vendors?
They're just paying the booth rate.
They just pay a booth rate?
The $50 booth rate.
And people, people aren't paying a percentage to the city of Avalon.
No, that's what I'm saying.
No, I mean...
The vendors, but there's people who have businesses that are established that pay a percentage of what their incentive is to...
Oh, percent, not to the, not to the city, but to their landlord, per se, yes.
And that was one of the, one of the things that I heard about it.
Do you all have business licenses?
We did ask for business licenses, yes, yes.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's competition against the people who basically have established the community. And I, I'd say, and the food, the food stuff, I think, is good. I'm not sure about, I'm in the middle of town, but I do like the farmer's market idea and the coffees and the, and the honey and the, and the breads and things like that. I, I think that's okay, but maybe not so much in the middle of Front Street. Like, there's a, there's a great east, there's a great place over by Antonio's, Big Antonio's patio there. There's a big space over there. It used to be outside of where the bathhouse was, but that's before your time.
That's, I, a lot of, some of that is island company property as well.
Half of it is.
Oh, that's island company property? Half of it is.
Oh, okay. Depending on whether or not, how you look at the high tide line. Okay. Not funny.
I know. Well, I would just like to say, I mean, just as I'm trying to start this arts commission, I'm very much in favor of supporting local artists. And artsy people, they're artists. And, and, you know, they, a lot of them don't typically have those regular jobs and doing whatever, because I personally don't have a creative mind, but I, but I understand that they are different than me. So I, and, and a lot of the people that went to the arts commission meeting wanted to see, want to see that kind of thing happening for most arts. I mean, they're even wanting studio space for artists. So, because all the coastal communities and other cities, even in Abita Springs, Louisiana, they have these food and artisan markets, and they go, and they go very well, and I know you did your research. So I would like to see it continue, I would like to see it continue. Sadly, there's, there's one particular vendor that seemed to bring a lot more of this to light. And, and it's very sad. You know, he's trying to, trying to make, he's trying to make a living. But that seems to be the one that, that has, has really kind of stirred this up a little bit more. And I don't know, some of the, I understand he does his own art, I, you know, I understand he does a lot of that. So I, and I don't know to limit some of the products perhaps, because they're unique and they're artful, versus some that are more like what a lot of the, the curio shops are selling, the keychains and the mugs. And I mean, I, I don't know, and I know it's touchy, but, but that seems to be the biggest issue.
Yeah, I mean, I think what you're referring to is Catalina Printing, and that's probably, if there was some direct concern, it was probably towards, you know, that particular vendor. You know, gone back and forth with him. I think he'd like to have a storefront operation, he hasn't been able to find one, this gave him an avenue. We let him in because it was, you know, it was handcrafted art, and he's silk screening on the island, so we made that distinction, opposed to it being purchased and brought over. Yeah, I did take some heat on that one.
What does he sell?
Uh, he's doing printed shirts, printed hats, he's doing printed tile, I mean, anything you can print on, he's, you know, he's printing on it, keychains, those types of things.
I think the problem is he's just right in, right, not in a close proximity, but right outside the front door of all these other established businesses. That's what these people have a hard time with, because they're making money one day a week, and they're paying bills seven, and, and they're going and operating at a loss six days a week. And that's, that's the big complaint I've had, is like, people aren't really making a great living on this island who have these little shops. They're just barely making it. And they're having a hard time when somebody puts up a tent right outside of their, their door, come in their business, that has another product that doesn't have the overhead that they have. So that's the big complaint, and it's really hard for, for me to say no to that, because those are the people that elected me into this office. And I can't say no, that it, it's, it's wrong, that, that it's okay for these people to be doing this and being in direct competition. And, and at the same time, everybody had a great, a lot of great things to say about you, and they said, we don't hold this against Dan Hunky, because he's searching through everything he can to create more opportunity and more pizzazz in this town, and they really appreciate you. So what you're doing is a good thing, keep it up.
I, uh, thank you.
I don't want to discourage you from what you're doing.
Thank you, no, thank you. I've got a, a couple of them that are, a whammy's are going to bring to you here pretty soon, so I hope you're open for them.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I did ask, you know, if I, if I can, I did ask him to stand down in November. We had a gentleman's agreement that he wasn't going to show in November. The city manager at the time overruled that, so we, we did let him in. You know, the, the, the market was taking some heat. I went to a chamber meeting, went to actually a couple of chamber meetings, and, you know, that seemed to be where the, the arrows are being slung. And so did invite him back, and, you know, here we are today, talking about it again. So I'm looking for some direction. We can alter this, you know, any way we want to. I'd like to see it move forward at some, some level. But at the same time, I don't want to be necessarily up here with three or four vendors on a Thursday night, because I just doesn't, I just don't think it'll have, draw the attention that we want to see it draw.
I totally agree with you there, too. I need, it does need to be downtown. I know that somebody said, well, why does it have to be on a cruise ship day? Well, that's just to, to, you know, that, that's just to get them that exposure when those people come to town. to town.
But you could do it on a weekend. Do it on a weekend day. I mean, I don't know. I'm just, just stepping out there. I don't know. I know the big thing is with the cruise ship and the weekend, I don't know. How many vendors do we allow, Dan, for that?
You know, we thought we'd like to see this grow to 20. I mean, we haven't, you know, we haven't, you know, certainly taken a look at a cap yet. The area that we're using can house about 20. We had the 10 or 11. Two of the vendors had double wide tents, so, you know, 13 or 14 is kind of where we're at now, if you look at it that way. We have got, we thought we were seeing some momentum for it to grow a little bit. We've got four other vendors. You know, one wants to do smoothies. The Metropole Cafe wants to do smoothies. Somebody wants to do some baked goods. We've got another artist that wants to show. And then there was, there was one more that expressed some interest.
And these are all local vendors? There's nobody from--
Everybody's been local except for, we had a leather vendor that came over the November show from San Diego that picked it up and showed.
And I asked, go ahead, the city attorney about, could we limit it to just local vendors? And--
Yeah, because this is public property, you have First Amendment rights, which means commercial, the ability to compete, especially if it's an artist thing, that can be seen as speech. So when I spoke with the mayor earlier this afternoon, we do have some research that we've, I can dust off to look at this, to look at the ability of the city to restrict local vendors to this type of event, or what ability the city has to restrict perhaps the local vendors and/or locally-produced products, and just have a locally-produced product. So we can look at that. But again, because this is on public property, your ability to restrict, once you decide the type of event, if it's going to be an artist event, your ability to restrict people to come to that event, if you have space available, is severely restricted.
So it has to be open?
It has to be open. I mean, generally, yes. I mean, I can, I'd have to dust off the research, but generally, the rule is that if you have space and it's an artist, you can't say, "That's not art," if someone says, "It's art," or if it's locally-produced, or if, for instance, you have food and someone wants to come, they want to make tamales. Nope, you can't have tamales, because that's not the right type of food that we want. So again, once you open it up, you gotta leave it open.
So how would you, so let's say, a bunch of my friends run first, and we say, "We want to do tamales, 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 tamales," or whatever. And then, now we've got all food and no art. How do we, how do we--
You could actually set up a system, which some cities have done, where you have a number of spaces, and you say, you know, 10 for food, 10 for artists, and then you have a rotating system. City of Santa Monica has a rotating system that they use with vendors for these type of things, where, you know, you're on a list, and sometimes you do it, sometimes you're not. And it's just a matter of, you know, it's a rotating thing if you have too many. Right now, you don't have that problem. So what I'm gonna, unless our research reveals something different, if you've got open space, and it's for artists, you have to let artists be there. And if it's for food, you have to let food people be there.
Yeah, our intent was to have a nice blend of the two. We didn't want to see it get out of balance, you know, by more than one or two on either side. We didn't want this to be an art market, you know, just an art market, and not necessarily just a, you know, just a produce. So we were going to try and maintain a balance there. And speaking to vendors coming from over town, we had somebody that was visiting the island. They caught wind of it. They were there, I think, the day before the October show, and she did farmer's markets over town and started inquiring about, you know, what it would take. And just the discussion we had with her, and we thought it'd be difficult just in general, but, you know, the time that they ship produce over, which some of the people are doing, but the ability to get it from, you know, pebbly out there, park a car or two for a couple of people, and then, you know, express over, it becomes a little financially inconducive.
Sure.
I think for, you know, a four-hour monthly, you know, market. So I think that would be really hit and miss on over town vendors coming over.
Vicki Johnson is in the back. Did you want to come speak to this for a minute? Three minutes?
Yeah, Jim Luke John couldn't be here, so he asked me to come here. Because it was brought up at the chamber board meeting in October. And so I was just going to read to you what was in our minutes that came up that meeting. So it's just one paragraph. "Dan Hunky explained the concept of the new artisans market. Three criteria were important to organizers: farmer's market, gathering place for the community, and opportunity for local artists. The goal was to have at least 10 vendors. If produce and food products were allowed exclusively, only a few vendors would participate. The first event on September 26th had 13 vendors, and the next market is on October 24th, both on a Tuesday, a cruise ship day. Initially, the market was to be weekly, but now it's scheduled monthly. Jenkins and Hapes expressed a need for a vetted policy input from the community, not a cruise ship day, and not necessarily on Crescent. Fornesir interjected that a farmer's market is welcomed by locals, but being held on a cruise ship day, they are working and they cannot attend." So that's a big point there. "Bovee agreed with the community's need for a farmer's market and utilizing non-cruise ship day. She also suggested business owners be contacted to hear their opinions. Montano referred to the event as a swap meet of sorts, stating tacos are not necessarily, non-not necessary, jewelry and art are not necessary, and a swap meet is not necessary. However, a farmer's market is needed." And then Hunky took the discussion in and said that they would revisit the date and place, and he also reminded that everybody that that night was Fall Fest. So the chamber board members were definitely not in favor of the artisans market the way it is. There was not a lot of positive comments made that day at that meeting. And since then, there's been more comments that have come back to the Chamber of Commerce from other businesses in town, that they don't want it on a cruise ship day, and that if it's going to be a farmer's market for locals to attend, that, yeah, it needs to be at a time that we can attend, because people are generally working on those cruise ship days, and they can't go down there and attend. So if it's really supposed to be for locals, it needs to be at a time that locals can be there. And maybe it should be a three-month trial where you try it on a Thursday and see how that goes. Because if it's, if it's a local thing, not a visitor thing, then we should be able to attend. And definitely cruise ship days, you've got a huge majority of the local population are working on those days. And something else that came back to us was, again, the whole thing that, you know, they're in their brick-and-mortar stores, they're paying their rent, they're paying their payroll, they're paying the business license, they're paying insurance, they're paying all these things, and they're there every day throughout the year, whether it's a busy day or not a busy day. And now these other ones are coming in and taking from, you know, from their profits because they're only there on that busy day. And so that's where the local retailers are upset by it. And so I do feel that it's a good comment to, that you should, like, discuss it with a lot of the local businesses. Somebody should go down and ask the different businesses, like, "How do you feel about this? And what are your suggestions for it?" And see what they say. But, you know, if you, in lieu of that, you may want to just try it for a trial period of three months on another day that's not a cruise ship day. So that's pretty much it, I think.
No, those are good minutes. You're taking good minutes there, Vicki.
Thanks.
Again, I still feel strongly that the artists should be able to have an opportunity to get out there. And if it was just vegetables and fruit, just vegetables and fruit, you'd have one vendor, right? Right now, we just have the young man who's, so that, that's ridiculous to me. But, so I think it should have, I think it should have artists and, you know, the lady who makes her own coffee, that's remarkable, you know. I don't know how strongly, I mean, if the community is really saying not on a cruise ship day, because the artists that are there, the local, the people in town that know our local artists can buy their art. They know where they are. The visitor who comes and sees art that isn't being carried in anybody's shops, how are they supposed to get their stuff out there? So I really like them to be able to have an opportunity. And one day a month for four hours is nothing to me. I mean, it doesn't seem like anything to me. So I'd like to see the art continue. Like, and again, we can all discuss the cruise ship day versus no cruise ship day, if in fact they want to be able to participate and go buy some artichokes. That's wonderful.
I think the question comes down is, what is the real target market? And is the target market those of us that live here, or is it the visitors? And if it's the visitors, we already have a lot of people targeting the visitors. The ones that are paying rent, the ones that are paying salaries. I mean, the ones that are in business here are 365. And I don't sure see we're dragging out stuff that will dilute the buying power of our guests over here. And I think every dollar, I mean, people come to Catalina, and I'm sure that most, everybody that comes here has a budget. And first big swipe of the budget, Catalina Express. Next big swipe is hotels. Next big swipe's something to do. And eventually, you get down to the portion where there's the souvenir portion. Then we have more people siphoning off souvenir money that doesn't necessarily stay here, leaves, and doesn't help the community any. It helps the person that does it, but doesn't help the community. I think that doesn't serve the community. It doesn't benefit the community.
But I think if we're supporting local artists, because there's not one artist that could support, I mean, I don't even know how Ruth Meyer does it, with her big old studio there. But the Portia Dennings and the Will Richards and the, and the whomevers that hang their stuff at the art gallery, they, I just, this is a community that we'd like to say is charming. And that is charming. That's the, oh, man, when we were there, we walked down there and we, we met the local artist. He was, you know, and he was demonstrating how he does his stuff and things like that. I think that's what I would like to see, where they, they're there, and it's, because nobody else is selling their work besides them. And it's, boy, I met Portia Danning, and look at the beautiful work she does. I think that's, that's adding charm to Catalina that people will remember. So that's why, if it's true artists, however you define it, true artists, I think that's, I'm not even so excited about a taco, because, because we get that all the time. But, and there are people that sell tacos. But I think for the artists and the musicians, and then the farmer's market concept of the produce and the blended coffees, that's what I like. And I don't know, I don't really care, whatever is decided or on the date, if it's that big a deal.
So it's a day of the week and the--
And where it's at.
And a place where it's at. But we've got to figure out--
Well, I think Front Street is the only place. It truly is. If we did something smaller, like you featured an artist and there's something over by Pancake Cottage, for example, you had a musician or an artist there, and they would sign up and do that. And then, and then that's another way to go, where you're just spotlighting people and then, and then doing the grocery part by there or somewhere else. I don't know.
Hey, Dan, were you able to touch any of the merchants down there? Have you touched any of the merchants along that way, on Sumner or anywhere else out there?
No, I have not gone door-to-door. I've probably had two of them come to me and say, you know, certainly they're not favorable of what we were doing, but have not gone door-to-door with them.
Okay.
Well, comments, because there are people in the audience.
Hi, everybody, and Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you.
I've been in business in town on the Front Street for a little over 30 years. And I've suffered through winters and springtime with trying to make the rent. And whenever we have these big shows on prime weekends, it takes away from my business. I represent artists all the time. One of the things that I get hit with all the time that you don't think about is for every little event in this town, I get hit up for a donation. Can you donate this? Can you give that? I always do. I want to support the community. I support people who rely on me for their paycheck and my own self. And this, this little market is going to grow into something bigger once a month, and it's going to take one more day out of my month, and it's not fair. I know how much you think this is cute and nice in Santa Monica, but Santa Monica or wherever has, you know, hundreds of thousands of people that can go to these places. We have just a very small amount of people here on a daily basis.
Okay. Thank you. Were you planning on having a market in January?
Not this time, depending on when it's--
Okay.
February.
Okay. Do we want to, we know what Katrina's thinking, and Lynn Cameron, I think, is kind of the same. I don't know. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'm going to get some more input back from some of the merchants around the area that this has been held.
And then come back the next meeting or whatever.
Well, you know, I think that part of, part of the, I think there's some who really don't care, you know. But, but if this isn't the answer to getting our artists out there, because the merchants, the businesses aren't covering, aren't carrying their products, and how does an artist survive?
No.
Local artists?
Yes. Almost everyone in town. And they all that because they, they don't, they all said, "They think that we're business together, and they call the shops and not their art." I know, they want to tell me--
Oh, so you've tried it? Yeah. Okay. Yeah. But, that's interesting comment, that's why it doesn't work. But--
And you did point out, Ruth's got a gallery, Portia's got a gallery, Ben's got a gallery. Now, there are places in town for people to display their art. I mean, it's not that it's a total void out there. And, you know, a lot of the stores have stuff, artsy stuff in them, too. I think, I think they're still having, I think what's happened, if you go way back in time, when they started the art festival, the art festival was supposed to be--
An art show.
Supposed to be an art show, supposed to be off-season. It was like the third weekend of September, two weekends after the steamer stopped, when the island died. And so now what our art festivals turned into is a, ah, yeah, craft festival, I think. You know, it used to be, it used to be paintings and photographs, and then there were some sculptures, and now it's turned into beads and leather goods and stuff like that. And then in the springtime, the conservancies got their art fair. So we've got two fairly artsy events already on the books. I don't, I don't think that there's not, I think there are avenues out there for local artists, personally.
Okay, so how do we want to move forward? Do we want Dan to go out and--
I'd like to get more input.
Okay.
Some of the merchants and stuff.
Well, and then, and we should also talk to some of the artists.
Great. And I agree.
No, no. And to see what--
Who would they feel about changing the day? Or, I mean, just get all kinds of different information.
I don't know where we're going with this. I think I know where we're going with this. This is not going to work. It's not going to work. No way. There's too many people in this town that already paid their dues, and they're paying them. Like, Katrina said it, no, I'm not doing this to the people that have been here for a long time. I'm not going to insult them like this and throw somebody else in competition with them that hasn't paid their dues. I'm not interested in carrying it over. But if Councilman Hernandez would like to do it, so be it. And then we'll just delay the bad news for these people till another date.
I'm sorry, Joe. I'm not laughing at you at all. It's not funny.
Well put, Joseph.
Okay, so is there direction to talk to artists, talk to a few more business people, see if there's--
Excluding the food stuff. I'm totally into that. I love honey. I love coffee. I love fresh fruit and fresh food, fresh vegetables, something that would benefit the community at large, something that's not in competition with the small people that are struggling to make ends meet. I'm okay with that.
Well, I'm glad Vons hasn't spoken up.
And as far as the artists, I'm sure that their things are charming, and they're made with love and a lot of skill, and they need to get together with somebody like Greg Miller, or somebody that has a shop or an existing art gallery. They need to patronize those people and get their things in those shops. to patronize those people and get their things in those shops so that those shops become more unique and they have more variety and, and, and they gotta work with the vendor, the shop owner instead of cutting the corners. And it's no, no, don't take this as anything that you're doing wrong, Dan, because you're doing everything right. Keep, keep those ideas coming because you are an asset to this community.
Yep, for sure.
Overwhelming with, with all people. All of us agree that.
Yes.
So that's, that's my point of view, but if you guys wanna hold it over, that's fine. Let's do that.
Dan, do you, do you feel like it, that would be beneficial to do?
With that direction, we could try a February and just have foods and drinks and those types of things. And when I say foods, you know, the vegetables, we've had the coffee.
You can have tacos.
Megan wants to do, you know, Megan wants to do smoothies. We've had some baked goods. Oh, cupcakes was the other one somebody was, was asking to do. We certainly could try that. It would be a smaller market. In the meantime, I can go out to the, you know, some of the, actually I can go out through all of, you know, the Front Street and put a quick survey. I mean, it's probably pretty inevitable on how that's gonna go, but we can, we can do that.
What about unique, unique art, like stuff that we know we don't have here? Let's say the Leather Craftsman. I mean, but I know we just got a fictitious business statement that I read in the paper for a new Leather Craftsman who is here from Catalina, but until she provides her, her items and puts them forward or requests getting a booth from you, I mean, things like that.
Yeah.
If, as long as they don't exist here, I'm okay with it, but I'm just, I don't wanna get overwhelmed with things that are gonna be in competition with, with the people that have unique stores as it is, especially art stores. Now, this stuff like, you know, all the, all the things that are from China, I, I don't know about that, like plates from China and shot glasses and things like that. I don't really look at that stuff as art. I know a lot of people make their living off that, so I don't want that stuff on Front Street, but I'm really not, you know, I'm not big on, on protecting that. Sending revenue to China for, for their cheap, you know, ceramic stuff, you know?
Okay. You kinda got direction?
I can find plenty of other things to do.
I know, I know. Yeah, and we don't want that to be burned out, but I would like, I mean, again, if, I can, I'm following Joseph on those kinds of things that you were laying out a lot. Again, though, and maybe it's just through, I still wanna see what we can do for local artists and musicians so they can be highlighted at some point, but maybe I, the best place to do it is through the Arts Commission and not through community services because we have a lot of people representing private business, artists and whatever museum that are all interested in promoting our artists and our musicians. So we'll, maybe we'll do it separately then.
Yeah, this is getting, this is good. This is gonna, this is gonna turn out to be something good, for sure.
Okay, so did we just change the direction, Rich?
No.
No surveys and just do the foods and the whatevers and the whatevers and the, and the, and then maybe just figure out a day of the week, 'cause I guess, you don't want the baked goods on Thursdays, on, on cruise ship days either? Or the?
Cruise ship days.
I'm, I'm looking to the ladies in the back of the room. So the artichokes and the?
You said, you said that you can't control yourself. You know, I can go to art, local art, but not, you gotta have some of your artistic stuff. That's not local art.
No, no, so, so if we do it more of just the farmers market in that arena?
Yeah.
Right.
You're directly, you know, maybe it's just where, just.
Exactly.
There are two businesses.
Right.
And decides to use all of them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, and Lloyd's now is gonna call and say, well, I don't want you doing cupcakes.
Yeah, you know, a farmers market, you know, on a Thursday in February, it's gonna be myself and five other vendors down there and, I mean, that'll be it. We just don't get the traffic down in Front Street.
The people can't take the stuff back on the boat. Can't take food back to the country.
Right, right.
Because they're going to Mexico.
Yeah.
So if they bought something, they'd have to consume it there.
I can't sign up for it anymore.
That was a very expensive proposition.
Yeah, it was the, it was who they were getting their?
And they were putting their stuff on the boat and bringing it over and, and all of that, where this other gentleman's having it shipped over, it's, it seems to be a little more easier. And it's good stuff. Okay, once again.
Think I've got my direction. Thank you.
Do you? Okay, Dan.
Later, ma'am.
Sorry. Okay.
That's it?
That's it?
No concession?
No concession?
What?
Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas, Tony. Oh, Dan, you, you have one more thing to say? Oh, okay. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas, Tony.
Merry Christmas.